All the meeting to order with all who wish to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
We have several proposed agenda adjustments, uh, which appear in the board copy in red. So I would propose make a motion to add item seven B I I UTC nine ten satellite program at OHS. Add item nine dot F dot I policies revision G A I guidelines and move item nine E before nine A.
And also add another remove nine D, the O M S construction application that's not quite ready to bring Noah tonight.
And to drop nine B. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We're all present in person. So all in favor, passes five to zero. Next up is organizational meeting, first meeting after the election. So we need to refill offices. No actual changes in the people sitting in the room, but, uh, but the, but you know, the offices all come due and get refilled from scratch. First up is chair.
So if you don't object, I will make a motion to nominate you for chair.
Okay, I don't object.
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Passes four zero one. I'm going to return the favor Jake. Uh, vice chair. I would make a motion to appoint Jake Eckert to vice chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Passes four to zero to one. Policy subcommittee. Mark and I have done that. I'm willing to keep serving if people want me to. What's your statement, Mark?
The same for me. I'm happy to do it. I'm also happy if somebody else has a burning desire to do it.
So I will make the motion for Brian McGill and Mark Fuhr to serve on policy subcommittee.
My second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
It is zero to two. Uh, curriculum. I think Mark has been a member. I have been ex officio. I have not been one of the two designated members.
I've been a member, but I've had trouble.
We knew that at the time. So I mean, there's, there's no criticism or, but we should pause and think about this one.
I've been in some of this year, um, which I've enjoyed, but again, I missed a lot.
So it's, it's second Thursday at three thirty.
So I'm sorry, am I hearing correctly that officially it's well, it's Mark and Noah, but Noah hasn't been able to make many. Mark makes them all and you make them all. His sex.
More or less. I don't make them all. I make most. I would own sale.
Are you wanting to, is your schedule change? Is that something you want to try and do? Or is that something like to be relieved of?
I mean, I can keep trying to do it and I've, I've managed to figure out how to block out that time, but it's still tricky. I, I can keep trying to make more and more of them as it happens, but people want more consistent.
Brian, uh, happy instead, are you still willing to serve as, uh, all?
Yeah, I mean, I would, since I'm chair again, I would continue to go ex officio.
Yeah. Either way, I think, but happy to do whatever people want. So I mean, I enjoy participating when I can.
Correct me if I'm, I'm sorry, correct me if I'm wrong. They're open meetings. You know, it could go if he's on the committee or not, right?
That's correct. They're notice meetings, so it's anybody can show up. It's okay.
Are you going to object if I nominate you to formally be on that committee?
And I know it's really whatever, whatever works for Noah and the rest of us.
Just not, I'm, I'm happy to stay on.
Okay. So I will make the motion to nominate, uh, Mark Fuhr and Brian McGill to serve on the curriculum committee.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Passes three to O to two. Next up is JPDC, Joint Professional Development. This meets, uh, three times, three or four times, four times a year. Uh, every couple of months, uh, it's, uh, in the union contract and it's a chance for the union and the board to sit down, uh, in a less formal conversational setting and consult. Uh, I think that's been you and I, Jake. My attendance has not been so great just by arbitrary conflicts, but in general, it's something that I can do and would intend to do. But, um, if somebody else wants to do that position, that's, that's fine too.
I might volunteer. I haven't been able to make the commitments of the D E I, uh, committee. And, um, so I'd be willing to pick up the JPDC as a, like an exchange. So I'm pulling my weight.
Kevin and then. Are you happy?
Yeah, I, I'll continue to do it. That's what's wanted.
I would make a motion to, uh, appoint Jake and Kevin to the JPDC.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Passes three to zero to two. Uh, UTC. And his back Kevin.
I'd like to get together.
Comes back and bragged about the great meals he gets. So he may have competition.
It is a very nice place. It's got a nice mission too, but I'll share.
Am I hearing you correctly? You'd like to continue?
I would like to continue.
So I will make a motion, uh, for Kevin to, uh, the UTC board.
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Passes three to zero to two. Uh, Spruce.
I do that currently. I'm willing to continue to do it unless someone wants to take it.
I would make a motion to appoint Jake to, uh, the Spruce. Uh, representative. Is there a second?
A second.
And the discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Passes four to zero to one. Just to point out those last two are formal because those, uh, people will get to go vote on regional bodies for budgets and directors and things like that. Uh, building committee, we haven't talked about it. Do we want to, this, this was created three or four years ago. It's kind of looked at its purpose. Anybody on the board have an opinion that we need to keep the building committee going?
Should we suspend it?
Okay. So we will not fill the building committee at this point. The wellness committee.
Doing it. I've been struggled to get meetings together. We have gotten some together recently and had a little momentum. Um, but happy to keep hurting it or have difficulty if they want to.
I'll make a motion to nominate Noah. Can I make a motion? My first motion, I think.
I'll make a motion to nominate Noah attorney for the wellness committee. Do I have a second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Passes four to zero to one. You've got a hundred percent success rate on your motions, Kevin. So you bet it. E I. That's been myself and Kevin, but I pretty much heard you say that's, uh, not a good time for you at this point.
I've made anything in the past year and I've had trouble making that commitment. So.
It's, uh, it's at three thirty. It's usually been moved around. It's three thirty in the afternoon, but sometimes Thursday.
And we've been meeting every other month. Is that right, Susan, or quarterly? I can't remember.
Yeah, this year we've been meeting quarterly from about three thirty till five. Most of them have been on Thursdays. We've had to do a Monday.
And it involves involvement with a subcommittee. So we have four or five subcommittees and books are, and then work groups in the between times and then scheduled in consultation with those subcommittee members.
Right. Those are scheduled ad hocs, like four or five people having to agree on a schedule. Who else want to, uh, serve on that? It is an afternoon time, which makes it harder for some people. I mean, we have effectively operated with one for the past year, but it certainly would be, I don't think anybody on the board is lacking commitment to the notion. So anybody wanted to volunteer, even if it was not, um, something they could commit to every time.
I do just want to throw out, uh, we have one that's not listed here that Shauna, thank you reminded me of. Stipend committee is not something that's listed, but we do have a board member typically pointed to that. So just if you're thinking about this, you know, one more.
That was Kevin.
I made one of the.
Once he remembers.
It does not need very often.
Yeah, it's quarterly. Or not by quarter, four times.
I mean, I'm happy to continue and not make very many of the meetings.
I mean, yeah, I could try making similar number of meetings too.
They're good people.
Yeah. I mean, I, again, it's like for me, it's the worry of the time commitment, like making those times. I mean, not to choose for you, but if you were both equally different and different, Kevin at least has the history and the continuity with it.
Recognizing that neither of you are going to, you know, be able to make it every time.
They're good people. No, no. You want the stipend committee? Cause I was on the stipend committee. Um, that does not be very often and it is not very long. Um, but I did forget for about a year, uh, before I attended.
All remote.
It is all the zoom meeting. Uh, Shauna takes care of the whole thing. Yeah, I zoomed in for Google meet.
Maybe it's, there's a remote option.
Remote option.
I can't remember if it's all remote or if there's a remote option.
We, we've been doing all remote since COVID and probably will keep doing it. People seem to like the stipend committee remote.
It's a light lift. Shauna runs it very well. It's very organized. It's not very long. And yeah, I still failed to show up.
You're really selling it.
All right. Seeing indifference, I'm going to make a motion. Oh no, I'm, I'm the other person. Smales want to make a motion. For the D I committee.
I'll make a motion to, for what?
For myself and Kevin, maybe for the D I.
For Brian McGill and Kevin Roberts to serve on the D E I committee.
Sir, is that good?
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Passes three zero two. Stipend committee. Did I hear that following on Noah this time around? Okay. I would make a motion that, uh, Noah is the representative for the stipend committee. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Passes four zero one. Uh, we discussed student reps last time. That's not part of the organizational meeting, but, um, I guess, yeah, no, now we're switching to November, we're still going to be, I was thinking in a different way, but, uh, the student thing will go to rotating toward the end of the school year, uh, going forward. So, uh.
Can I actually ask a question on, on that?
Yeah.
Since, since our elections got changed against our rule, um, are we going to have, are we going to have, we, there shouldn't be anybody here up in November. Is there going to be?
It is November.
Now.
Now.
Next municipal election will be in November of twenty twenty five.
It's people who were, would be up next March.
They'll be up in.
Would be up in November instead.
And then the same thing. Brian and I would be up in November of twenty.
Right.
So essentially the first time around, everyone's serving extra time.
Yeah, everybody's sitting here just got an extra six months added here term. Although that's a good thing or a bad thing. It depends on individual perspective, but. Yes, it is. Uh, I don't have a list of warrants. Are there any warrants we need to do tonight? Any discussion or corrections? Thank you, Rachel. This is not normal to never have corrections. So we appreciate your fine job on that. All those in favor? Passes five to zero.
And to boil down that last meeting to three pages.
Yes, it is. Uh, I don't have a list of warrants. Are there any warrants we need to do tonight?
Since COVID and probably will keep doing it. People seem to like the stipend committee remote.
It's a light lift. Shauna runs it very well. It's very organized. It's not very long. And yeah, I still failed to show up.
You're really selling it.
All right. Seeing indifference, I'm going to make a motion. Oh no, I'm, I'm the other person. Smales want to make a motion. For the D I committee.
I'll make a motion to, for what?
For myself and Kevin, maybe for the D I.
For Brian McGill and Kevin Roberts to serve on the D E I committee.
Sir, is that good?
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Passes three zero two. Stipend committee. Did I hear that following on Noah this time around? Okay. I would make a motion that, uh, Noah is the representative for the stipend committee. Is there a second? Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Passes four zero one. Uh, we discussed student reps last time. That's not part of the organizational meeting, but, um, I guess, yeah, no, now that we're switching to November, we're still going to be, I was thinking in a different way, but, uh, the student thing will go to rotating toward the end of the school year, uh, going forward. So, uh.
Can I actually ask a question on, on that?
Yeah.
Since, since our election got changed against our rule, um, are we going to have, are we going to have, we, there shouldn't be anybody here up in November. Is there going to be?
It is November.
Now.
Now.
Next municipal election will be in November of twenty twenty five.
It's people who were, would be up next March.
They'll be up in.
Would be up in November instead.
And then the same thing. Brian and I would be up in November of twenty.
Right.
I mean, twenty seven.
So essentially the first time around, everyone's serving extra time.
Yeah, everybody's sitting here just got an extra six months added here term. Although that's a good thing or a bad thing. It depends on individual perspective, but. Okay. Uh, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
So any discussion or corrections? Thank you, Rachel. This is not normal to never have corrections. So we appreciate your fine job on that. All those in favor? Passes five to zero.
And to boil down that last meeting to three pages.
Yes, it is. Uh, I don't have a list of warrants. Are there any warrants we need to do tonight?
Warrant eighteen, payroll eighteen and main purse first February, February.
Thank you. I would make a motion to approve regular warrant eighteen, payroll warrant eighteen, uh, main purse, February warrant. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Passes five to zero. Floor is open for public comments. You all know we have guidelines in the public comment. Um, there's a, uh, I'm not going to impose a, a time limit, which puts a default time limit of five minutes and, um, we are not allowed to discuss employees positively or negatively. Uh, but, uh, just about anything else is fair game. Uh, the floor is open. Is there any public comment? Saying none, we'll move on. Uh, acknowledgements.
Okay.
I'd like to acknowledge the show choirs, middle school and high school. I know both went to districts and did well and the, uh, OMS chess team finished third in the state. That's quite a, talk about, uh, dynasties in Orinow. Uh, the middle school chess is pretty close to it. So congratulations to all of those participants and coaches. Kevin?
None at this time. Thank you.
Noah?
Um, yeah, I guess, just after our conversation last time about that, I got you and teachers. I just want to acknowledge the work the teachers have put in and being really creative in their teaching here. And, and I just got reflecting on like my past teachers and how much they influenced me and the creative, non-traditional things they did. And I can see that here a lot of teachers and I just really grateful for all the work that they do that it doesn't always get paid back.
Students, anything?
Uh, I wanted to shout out the one X was there, uh, good showing at their district's competition. Um, and they got some shout outs from people that are mentioned in our report.
Yeah. And shout out to all the new inductees to the National Art Honor Society, their ceremonies last night and shout out to Mrs. Lawrence, all the hard work she put into setting all that.
Um, I have a few. I want to, um, acknowledge the, um, O H S boys varsity basketball team. We haven't met since they, um, finished their route back to the state game and, uh, brought home the gold ball again. So congratulations to that team and coaching staff for back-to-back championships. And to Pierce Walton specifically, there were a lot of accolades, but Pierce was selected for a pretty prestigious honor, selected as the max creps main cleared the year for the entire state for boys basketball. So congratulations to Pierce. Um, also, uh, on a related note, Mike put his winter athletic, um, kind of summary report in your folders for your review. Um, and, uh, one thing that you're going to hear a little bit more about, I think in the board reports, but I wanted to acknowledge Meredith Diamond's successful grant application for an outdoor, um, learning initiative for, um, kind of a step up program for ninth graders during the summer, uh, for fifty three thousand dollars. So, um, took a lot of effort and really excited to, for that successful grant application.
Great.
Awesome.
Uh, let's see. We're onto reports, principal reports. Karen?
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to really briefly highlight for you three things from my report tonight. And first will be a shout out to our P T O and all of the family and community members that helped to put together the family dance on March second. There was a really fantastic turnout. They had more than fifty families and hundreds and hundreds of people in the building, um, enjoying an evening together. And a big thank you to, uh, Ms. West for being the admin on site that evening as I was not available. Um, so it was really a wonderful opportunity for that, uh, to take place. Um, I don't think events like that have happened, um, most recently. So it was really exciting to see. And I had a few photos in my board report as well as in my March newsletter, if you'd like to take a look. Uh, the second thing I'll highlight is March is pretty busy for ESA students, um, comparatively to other months of the year. Um, we have, um, uh, kindergarten and pre K registration night happening this week. Um, so any reminders that you know of anyone that needs to register, a little one that that will become a new community member at ESA, um, send those reminders out. Hopefully we see lots of folks. Um, we have our fourth and fifth graders participating in their first orchestra concert on March twenty first with the rest of the district. So that will be exciting for all of them. We also have on March twenty sixth, a curriculum or literacy night, um, which I know has been mentioned before, but it is very exciting. And the literacy team at ESA, along with all of the classroom teachers have been working hard to get ready for this night. The last time this was planned was for March of twenty twenty. Um, so the staff is feeling really good about bringing this back. And we're excited to hopefully see lots of families and folks in the building on that night. And then finally, we also have ESA students that are going to be participating in the show choir extravaganza on March twenty ninth. So it's going to be pretty busy for, um, the, the kiddos at ESA. Uh, the last thing that I just wanted to take a moment and talk about is that we have been working with our P T O, um, to rethink through our current playground. The ASA play structure is more than thirty years old at this point, and there are components of it that, um, are in disrepair. And unfortunately, as hard as Bill has been trying, there are parts of it that we just cannot, um, get up and working again. We've had caution tape on parts of it for most of the school year. Um, so the P T O has been working, um, to, um, put together a proposal for a sizable donation to help us with a new play structure. Um, so, uh, working with them, uh, Bill Cody and some, some of the staff at ESA were looking at what a new play structure could look like, estimating a cost for that. Um, Bill is also looking at, um, from the facilities point of view, the groundwork, um, if there needs to be, um, different, um, substrate or material under our play structures and drainage, um, that would be more appropriate for that. Um, so hopefully by the end of, um, this month, we will have some estimates and ideas of what a new play structure might look like, um, for the students at ESA. So those were the only things I, I wanted to highlight tonight. And if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you. We move on to the middle school. Richard?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all tonight. Um, I, I want to start with, uh, a, a bit, a little bit of athletics here. And, uh, thank you all for acknowledging, uh, the success of our chess team this year. I, I wanted to point out they won the Penobscot Valley Middle League Championship. A couple of individuals were recognized and I don't have my list right in front of me in third place at the states. And, uh, Coach Trip, who's been at this a long time, uh, was nominated, uh, for coach of the year as well. So, uh, nice job to Coach Trip on that. And, uh, we're lucky to have him. He's such passionate about chess. I, I never saw anyone, uh, as passionate about chess as, as he is. Um, our unified basketball team is in full action. Last week they had a game against Setimocha and today they're playing over at Hampden. And, uh, so, uh, that's a lot of fun, uh, for those kids. And, uh, so that season is in full, full swing. Thanks for your support there with unified basketball. And, uh, one, one collaboration that, that I'm excited about is, uh, you know, we have the university in our back door and, and we've been doing some collaboration with, with, uh, both men's and women's teams. And, uh, humane football has been around, uh, uh, recently. We, we had a, uh, WA A B I news story last week and I shared the link there in, uh, in the newsletter and, uh, humane women athletes from a variety of different sports have also been coming over, uh, and participating in our morning intermuro, uh, program. And, uh, uh, for girls and, uh, Mr. Kirk Patrick organizes that. Thank you to him. And, uh, so we're getting that kicked off. And we're looking toward the future to bringing in, uh, some humane, uh, teams to do a similar activity as we do with, uh, uh, humane football. So that's kind of, that's in the planning stage. But, uh, so we got, uh, that collaboration going on. Uh, last week we had a great opportunity to, uh, visit the Penobscot Theater on March sixth. My story is Glue Scobby and we get to see, uh, a Native American perspective, uh, very important, uh, as, uh, it's a, it's a different perspective. From the traditional, uh, science perspective on, uh, life on the river and, and how, uh, we interact with nature and, uh, and, uh, the implications when we try to do things that, uh, go against nature. So it was, it was a great story and a great learning experience. My story is Glue Scobby. If, uh, I think it's still playing, I highly recommend. Um, and, uh, I wanted to really highlight today our work on, uh, the student success plan. So I, I shared a link and I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but it has a lot of different graphs and, and different information, uh, about our student body. And, and so I just wanted to highlight quickly. It's a lot of information here and too much to go into in great detail, but, uh, it really gives us a sense of who our students are and who our families are, you know, and, and what their background is. And so I felt, I found it very, uh, informative in that regard, uh, the religious identity for it to highlight one example. Um, I was surprised in that, that we had, uh, such a high percentage of students who either are, are not religious or they don't, or they don't know, or maybe they missed. They didn't understand some of the questions, but they identified as not religious or they didn't know. And, and, and I think the numbers there showed, you know, a fairly high, uh, percentage. I'm going to estimate, you know, more than fifty percent of our students fall into one of those two categories. That was, that was interesting. And, and if you look at world religions, we have, uh, if, if they're telling the truth, uh, most represented here in, uh, in our population. And, and that is, uh, interesting and important for us to know, I think. Uh, other areas that, that I thought were, uh, important to understand is, uh, students who identified, uh, people who support them with their academic growth and people who support them with their personal and emotional growth. We had, you know, a smaller number of students who, uh, who didn't find, uh, supports in those areas. And, uh, so we're able to drill down, we're able to identify those students and kind of, you know, put our heads together and, uh, I, I don't try to figure out why that might be. And, uh, there, there were a certain number of what I call nonsense answers, uh, in the responses, uh, uh, And uh, there were a certain number of what I call nonsense answers uh in the responses uh uh. Like, I I think I highlighted in there, one student put my dog, like it, he put that same response in quite a few different answers, right? And uh, so, but we didn't have much of that. I think for the most part, students were pretty honest and straight up with us. Um, but you know, you have to consider a little bit of that uh nonsense answers uh happening there too. And lastly, the word clouds, I I want to give credit to Mrs. White for uh developing the word clouds on on the the last page. And these were uh data that we weren't sure how to share. So the word clouds really do a nice job, a- and the bigger words uh identify, like the the most common responses are those bigger words, right? And uh, so you can kind of see how that how that plays out. And uh, but but I thought that that was good work, and I wanted to acknowledge uh Ms. Deshane and Mrs. White for like helping me uh develop these graphs and this nice infographic for us all. And uh, and the entire staff, you know, for reviewing and uh uh the data and providing feedback as we work through that.
Great, thank you. Any questions? All right, the high school, Sam and Meredith.
Hello, everybody. Um, thank you to all of you who have already highlighted a lot of successes that we've been experiencing here at the high school. Um, in our board report, I included more of those, including like the jazz band, some math team accolades recently. Uh, but there's just been a lot going on. Um, and we're really, really proud. Um, and I know I I believe I know that I speak for both Meredith and I. This is a really exciting time, and it's really proud to be a part of seeing our students succeed in ways in the classroom as they do every day, but also in ways um in their extracurricular choices that really um shows them and shows us where they shine additional to their ac- academic um accomplishments. So thank you to everybody and congratulations to all um that are included in those lists. Um, but I'd also like to just um make a specific shout out to Sherry Weeks. Recently, um, there was the um week in which they honor um the work that she does for our students. And we just are very, very fortunate to have her as our athletic trainer. Um, a a lot of schools have great people that work with them, and they all work really hard to keep students um s- safe and healthy as they compete. But certainly Sherry Weeks is um not only that person for them, but also a person that a lot of students look forward to seeing every day, turn to, to talk to. And as you'll notice, if when you're out at our athletic events, they they're yelling to her, they're saying hello, and they each even, some even have like secret handshakes. So thank you so much, Sherry, for all that you do for our students um every day. Really appreciate it. And I also wanted to make a quick um thank you and appreciation uh to those that helped with Step Up Day. Our recruitment efforts this year have grown. Um, we're really looking at trying to really uh show people what Orno High School is and what we have to offer them as students and their students, yet their families. Um, and really, we've had a lot of people supporting that, from students in the ambassador programs to staff, um, to a a group of people that were part of my recruitment committee, uh guidance staff, Meredith Diamond, just everybody really pulling together to really try to show those out there uh what makes us amazing. So I just wanted to say thanks to everybody. Those efforts continue. We do have um a registration night coming up on the twenty seventh. And the guidance counselors are going back out to um our um outlying towns to really meet with students again and answer any questions and even maybe share some new programs that I believe Meredith is going to share in a moment. Um, so those are exciting, and I also just wanted to share with everybody that's Winter Carnival Week, which is crazy and exciting. Um, yesterday we had uh our annual staffer senior basketball game, which I tried to commentate for. Meredith did a wonderful job playing on the court. Um, but it was a lot of fun with students and and every day this week is is dress up days, finding little um, I don't know what they are. I don't know if they're little gnomes or what they are really, but these things that they can earn prizes for. And then we have a wonderful dance um on Thursday. They're leprechauns. Oh, that actually makes a lot of sense. See, that's where I struggle sometimes. There you go. Anyway, leprechauns. There's also worms around the school, and I'm not quite sure what the worms are about, but anyway. Um, but a lot of, just a lot of fun stuff going on and just wanted to say thanks to everyone who's a part of all of that. Meredith.
So today was actually Adam Sandler Day, and um, you know, I think that when uh board meetings fall on a on Spirit Week, that it's not a bad idea for everyone to dress up in in theme, so um we'll be sure to keep you posted about that next year.
That one's noted.
So um, you know, as Sam said, this is, it's a really exciting time of year, and there is is so much going on. And um, one of the pieces that has been happening um in a, in a committed and um thorough and detail oriented way, really behind the scenes is preparation for our upcoming NEAS accreditation visit. Um, those folks, as I mentioned, are going to be arriving uh here on Sunday. They're staying at Hotel Ursa, um, which if, you know, you have folks from out of town, um, seems to be uh really like choice accommodations now in Orno. Um, and they've been great to work with. Um, but uh Jen Branchflower and Margie Ennis, in an effort to protect professional development time for the important work that the district is doing, um, to protect that for uh the faculty at large have really taken this lift on um on their own. And it has um, it has taken a lot, a lot of hours, and those hours for them are are going to, you know, be um ongoing until the visit concludes next Wednesday. Um, but if your paths happen to cross um Jen or Margie's in the near future, I encourage you to just recognize that to them because they are, they are doing an incredible job. And um, they have, through their commitment to seeing this process through, have allowed for all of the other priorities that we have in the district to keep um making forward progress throughout the rest of the year. And you know, I think that that is, the value of that is not to be understated. Um, the only other item I'm going to report on tonight is um our upcoming uh New Roots Shared Ground, a welcome home camp for rising Orno High School ninth graders, uh which we'll be running the week of August fifth um here in Orno. And you know, this is a project that um is a, an arm of the conversations that we've been having about ninth graders for, you know, at this point, probably approaching two years, you know, here in the high school that, you know, started around an observation that what students seem to need now is really not what we have historically given students. And you know, how do we figure out what what else we could be doing? Uh, but it's also an outgrowth of our um our DEI work and our equity audit. It's an outgrowth of the um, the work of the wellness committee. It is an outgrowth of the vision that has been taking shape on the strategic um leadership planning team. And um, you know, the priorities that have been set therein that really are reflective of, you know, the priorities of this community. And um, in in that context and in that ecosystem, um, the project itself came together in the way that the state often demands, which is um in a three to four week window where you have um not a whole lot of time to think of something new, but have a chance to bring to bear an idea that, you know, coalesces a lot of things that have been happening um in the background. And so um, the parameters of the funding were specific. Uh, it needed to be something that had an expenditure window that closed at the end of the summer. It needed to be something that was specifically targeted at um disadvantaged students, and it needed to be something that maximized time outdoors. Um, and so the project, as we have planned it, is going to pull together um rising ninth graders from uh, we're sending towns coupled with um students in rising ninth graders from Orno Middle School who are identified as at risk. Um, and it is, the the idea is that by um bringing those students together for a weekend this summer um with ninth grade faculty um wherever possible, um in the outdoors at the Caribou Bog Outdoor Learning Center, um, we hope to um help lay the foundation for success as a community. We hope to um create the kind of bonds that will help those students feel connected to one another before the school year starts. We hope to help them um build connections with faculty with whom they'll be working, um, you know, in ninth grade and beyond in order to, you know, have relationships that can can fuel their success. And we hope in, we hope to um involve families. Um, the the plan uh includes an end of, end of camp um celebration meal for students and their families. And you know, in the spirit of our student and family welcoming committee, um, right, helping everybody feel like a part of this community. And um, and then, you know, to have all of that unfold within the context of the Penobscot River Basin um with our connection to um, you know, to Wabanaki Land. Um, you know, we have students, hopefully we'll have students from um in the Indian Island School who will be joining us. Um, Jeff Owen and I had a, had a great meeting with Angie Reed today to talk about how the Department of Natural Resources for the Penobscot Nation, um, and specifically water resources can can support this project and be a part of it. Um, and in the wake of that conversation, Jeff and Angie and I had the sense of of this potentially being um the the beginning of some really, really meaningful collaborations around um student needs and um and shared land and um a blending of cultures that, you know, we have been talking about for a long time, but struggling to find, you know, to way, a way to make happen. So um, we hope that this project will be the beginning. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, and that sounds super exciting, and it, you know, pulls together many threads we've been talking about, so it's nice to see it materializing. So that's super exciting.
Thank you, and I I do want to mention that, you know, this, all of this, all of the discussion about ninth grade really rests on the shoulders of Jeff Owen. Uh, you know, who is is been in this community a long time and is uh, you know, has been a um, a visionary in this regard. And um, so similarly with with Jen and Margie, if if you happen to pass uh or cross paths with Jeff, um, you know, please, please recognize that to him as well.
Did you hear something?
Yeah, I guess I, I mean, yeah, it's, it sounds really, I'm really excited about that and hope, hope we can build on that, expand it in the future. So we can all go, and it sounds, sounds wonderful, like really great, that's. But I just also wanted to say like, reflecting on the Acer reports and all the reports, just a comment that like, um, you know, when when I came here with Rico, it was like just after COVID and it, there was this sense of like disconnect between the community and the school. And with all these events and things happening, I really felt the sound of like that connection really bonding, like feeling more connected to parent, teacher, and QO, all these like, the dance and things like that. It just feels really, really good. I'm really like just thankful for the administrators and the teachers and folks who've been doing all this work to.
Hey, anything else? I guess also in the category of backing up, Richard, I just, I I was busy taking notes, but I just wanted to pause and say that was really great to see the SSP report. Uh, I really appreciated seeing that, and it was a a really um much deeper, well, broad brush picture, but uh a much uh more thorough and data driven picture than I think I've ever seen, so uh that that was great. Thank you for that, too.
Sure.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to superintendent report.
I have a resignation to report. Um, our MLL teacher, Rose Pompey, um, has notified us that she's accepted another position in another district, so she will be leaving mid May. We've advertised the position and hopes to find someone to fill that um by then. Um, I want to start with the ninth grade tu- student tuition data. Mark asked for some data when we last met, and I think just taking a moment to look at it and talk about it. Lynn put this together and Lynn's on the um meeting, listening in while she's working at her desk. So let me just, I want to share my screen, so we're all looking at the same. Um, so this is as far back as um could be put together, you know, with the amount of effort I thought we wanted to put in at this point to look at this, but it's a, you know, seven year look back. And um, you can see that the percentage varies a lot um from a low of thirty two percent back in the fall of two thousand eighteen to a high the very next year of fifty one percent. Um, and then last year was really our next lowest, or this current year actually is our next lowest year um that we've had in these seven years. Um, what we also observed, it's not, it's not listed here, and it's a harder thing for us to ascertain and and have good data on is is what was the base that year that we were trying to draw from? Um, and that's where we, you know, typically have set that percentage that we're um, you know, feeling like we get around thirty, low thirty percent of whatever the enrollment is in the area schools for any given year. Um, and I think, you know, around two thousand nineteen, we really shifted some things about how we were doing recruitment and lots of planning and effort went into that, and we've really maintained that model with just a few tweaks since then. And the data's been really consistent at really until this year. Well, I guess in twenty twenty, it went back down, so it was uh at a high in twenty nineteen and then back down ten percentage points. So it's, you know, while the forty one percent in twenty twenty looks like a low number, when you look at how large the class is overall, it's really skewing that because we actually have fifty kids that year, which is, you know, the second highest number of students over the seven years. So um, you know, this is a small class, the li- actually, the last two years um have been small ninth grade classes overall. Um, and the, you know, this year's ninth grade, really the the tuition student number is a real contributing factor to that low number. Um, last year's number, we had, you know, more of a typical, I think, resident tuition uh population in the twenty twenty two year. Um, so, you know, sometimes we have big groups and get big groups in, and sometimes we have small groups and get small groups in, and sometimes it's, you know, somewhere in between there. Um, as we said last time, it's, it's looking like this ninth grade year is going to shape up to be one of those. We have really a a typical sized freshman class or eighth grade class coming out of Orno Middle School um in the, I think, upper forties and looks like a small tuition student pool. So um, we have the registration night in late March. Have a better sense after that night um what our tuition student um registration is going to look like. Do you have any questions about this? Anything further you'd like to see in this?
It's the budgeted number per, recognizing we're conservative there, but FY twenty five, the budget number.
Lynn, how many freshmen did you fill in, if you can? Just trying to find her up.
Yeah, give me a second. I'm pulling that spreadsheet up right now. I'll get right.
It's in the twenties, I think.
Okay.
Twenty three.
Thank you.
Twenty three would be like the left column there. For this year, the ninth grade tuition student.
Or the coming year.
I mean, typically it goes up a little from there because Lynn's conservative, but yeah, clearly, clearly a low number.
Last year's summer turned out to be almost spot on, right Lynn?
Yes, we were uh one shy from last year's number, but um we're, this year, we're losing thirty seniors that are tuition and gaining and counting on twenty three freshmen. So so we're losing a big year and counting on a small year.
A bit of a double whammy at bullpens.
But you know, something that I talked to Meredith about is being conservative also helps us in a year like this one where we had quite a bit of movement of ten through twelfth grade. Um, whereas when we get it spot on, everyone that moves, you know, is a hit. So um, that's also something to think about, about that number is not only do we want to make sure we're going to get that number, but we want to give ourselves a little bit of wiggle room um for the ten through twelve kids leaving.
You, so you changed things in our recruitment in nineteen?
I think that was the year.
And was that, I'm just trying to understand these patterns. It seems like there's on both the tuition and the overall, it's just slow up and down, but the percentage has sort of ran. But like, and was that shift? Do you think you've done the same thing ever since then? It's been like, it wasn't like that, it looks like that year there was a big shift instantaneously, but then it.
I mean, Sam, Sam can speak to that. I I I feel like we have done the same general recruitment program since that time when we made some changes uh with some subtle, you know, subtle, like one student group may have performed one year and the next year a different student group performed and. Sam, is there anything else that you would ask that?
Yeah, we try to rotate through who performs. Um, and some of it, to be quite honest, comes at what time um, within the performance schedule um, for some of the groups. So for example, like one thing we want to try to work in if we can, um, but, but just have to be um, working with Jenna Costa is for modern band to perform. Um, but the way that the, uh, our step-up day falls at the beginning of the second semester, the first semester students are no longer in the class and the first semester kids are just starting. So we're gonna, she's gonna build in next year, for example, that the first semester kids will be told that they're gonna perform. So they, even though their class is over, they'll be prepared to perform to show, um, you know, a class in which somebody like myself, who has very limited, if zero, artistic ability could be able to take that class and learn and grow and have a great experience. Um, we do the same with, you know, orchestra versus choir versus, um, we've had the Wabanaki drummers last year, whereas this year, um, the orchestra was what welcomed them when they came in. Um, so we do try to change it up and give some variety to it. Um, as well as we make a little adjustments throughout the overall experience for them based on feedback and current students and what we have going on in the school.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm just trying to read if there's some like bump from some novelty thing that happened in the ninth year and then it sort of flourished or something. Like maybe it's just COVID.
Well, it's um, student enrollment really is very driven by cohorts and trends in a school with certain key students who are pretty um, influential on friends' decisions, make an early decision and are committed to a place, you know? Sometimes lots of students follow that trend. Um, and some years that helps us and some years that, you know, hurts our recruitment efforts. I know that some groups like, you know, there was a big group of students who had participated with us coming up in youth athletics, um, who are in the current junior and senior class that I think athletics kind of fostered their relationships here coming up through youth programs and they made decisions to come here. Not everyone did, certainly that was in that, in that group. And those youth programs aren't fully what they were then. I think um, the football program specifically kind of has trickled off away.
Marissa, did you have a?
We have to factor in other people's recruitment plans as well. Uh, when uh, years when a different school uses like a fire element in their ninth grade year can have different draws. I'll tell you about it.
I mean, my, my take is the total number of students to recruit, there is some pattern and it ties to whether there was a recession fourteen years prior and some things like that and that number goes up and down, but the success of the recruitment, um, you know, like Meredith was saying, this is recruiting fourteen-year-olds who are well-known to be social and potentially fickle in what their priorities are, right? And you know, the, the group influencer in Glenburn, one year goes to Orno because their older brother or sister went to Orno, or their parents went to Orno. And the next year, the group influencer in Glenburn goes to Bangor because their parents or older brother or sister went to Bangor. And it, it can be very clumpy and um, and a big swing because of, I think, the social dynamics of this. And it's really unfortunate for us because this is an important contributor to tuition, but I, I kind of get left at sports metaphors about you know, we have to give it our best shot and leave everything on the floor and those kinds of things, but we don't have total control over the outcome. And I, I, I have confidence that we're doing leaving everything on the floor and we're just, you know, until I see several years of data, I'd have a pretty hard time saying there's anything actually under our control on this.
One school though, that we are by all accounts losing students to on a relatively consistent basis over the last few years is Hannon. And then there's no doubt about that. We were losing kids behind an academy at a higher level than we were five years ago. And so I don't know if that seems, you know, still a relative in your facility um, with great outdoor facilities. Bigger school, I don't know why that is, but that's one, a place where we're consistently using out.
Two other things that I think about when I look at this spreadsheet, the one thing that it doesn't show, that percentage is just the percentage of ninth graders that are tuition, but it's really hard to tell what the percentage of kids that were available that we got were. Um, which is, that is really would be more tied to recruitment than than just the percentage that's tuition opposed to the total enrollment. So that, that number isn't there part of the league because we don't have that information. But the other factor that.
I'm actually working on pulling that information. Um, I had a conversation with Susan today and she suggested I go to the SDA dashboard to pull student numbers from, you know, the different classes. Um, and so my hope is to be able to provide that um, soon because the fluctuations are so significant, like you know, the fluctuation in Indian Island can go from three students to eleven in one year. The fluctuation in VZ can go from ten to twenty-five. And to Lynn's point, you know, it's really more about, I think, the percentage of, of rising ninth graders that we are getting. Um, and that, that's the figure that intrigues me.
Right. And the other factor that I had mentioned to Meredith is some of those bigger classes, like our junior class had a ton of um, superintendents agreements in the middle school. So they just naturally came here and we have less of those right now. So um, that's also a factor when we can, when we're able to, obviously we have limiting factors, but when we're able to take superintendent's agreements, then they're, they come into our system early. They tend to stay with us. So there, there, some of those years are had really nothing to do with recruiting and all about kids that were already here. So um, that's just.
Those superintendent's agreements were specifically new sports in that particular class.
Some others, I mean, I could think of a number of reasons, like one is things in RSG thirty-four changed a bit over those years. They used to allow superintendent agreement, or they used to allow tuition and then they changed. You had to go another route. So it's more restrictive. So there are a number of factors, but.
Yeah, this last, this last freshman class had a big group too, and I don't think it was athletics on that. In that case, it was just um, they were just here.
And we have a reasonably longish meeting, so I don't want to cave anybody off, but uh, just want to keep people's eyes on the total agenda too. Anything else?
Say one other thing. I was at a, a regional superintendent's meeting last week and um, I, there were some, some of us talking about tuition students and um, the Glenburn superintendent said that their fresh, their eighth grade class this year, which is a smaller class compared to previous Glenburn classes is one of the largest classes they have now. They've seen a, a real enrollment dip in their community. And so that being one of our largest sending towns, I think, for the foreseeable future has lower overall enrollment. And um, as Meredith said, you know, some of the smaller communities, uh, like VZ and Indian Island have just real swings. So it'll be um, interesting if we do um, did I mention about the regional um, enrollment study we're talking about with Pankless? I think I made it at the UTC meeting, Kevin. We're talking at Pankless about doing a regional enrollment study um, that will help all of us in a number of fronts, and it will be really interesting for us to use that to see what is our, what do our base tuition towns, you know, look like right now? What are they forecasting? Forecasting to look like.
Everybody. I guess move on is back to Meredith. But everybody ready to move on?
Um, the next thing is the UTC nine-ten satellite program. I think uh, last year, it, Old Town opened the first regional ninth and tenth grade satellite program in our, in our UTC region. Um, it's something that the state um, was encouraging youth um, vocational technical centers to, to do to expand the reach of CTE in a way that um, maybe utilize spare capacity at sending towns without having to build more space at technical centers and drew in students in a more um, kind of embedded part of their school day into experiencing what CTE might be like. And so there were, there are funds dedicated to this initiative at the state to develop this programming. And basically it works a lot like an elective uh, wheel does in middle school. So in middle school, for example, we have an elective wheel in sixth grade and students rotate through on a trimester basis or quarter basis, however it's structured each year, to different topics. And that's how the satellite programs work. It, there are usually four um, programmatic topics selected that tie into CTE programs that gives students an introduction to that programmatic topic. And so um, when we heard about this last year, late in the year, Meredith um, and I approached Amanda Peterson at UTC to say, you know, we'd like to, we'd like to get on the list to be considered to be able to offer one of these programs. And um, our kind of place in line would have put us eligible for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, well, one of the schools that was slated to start a program for twenty-four, twenty-five dropped out. Variety of reasons. But Amanda contacted us and said, you're next in line. Can you, do you think you would be able to work with us to stand up a program next year at Orno High School? Um, and so Meredith had a couple of meetings with Amanda. She had a meeting with the guidance staff and Sam and myself just to talk about um, possibilities and what we see as maybe the, the areas to pursue as um, I, as a school, you get to choose the four areas pretty much that you want to offer in your program. And so um, really in doing that, you consider your population and what counselors and the principals are hearing from students about interest or what they know about the student population in terms of um, maybe what would be interesting to them. And then UTC um, designs a program around that and finds an, an instructor to provide programming and some um, entry level kind of usually some kind of certification or, or um, like micro credentialing for those programs. Um, in terms of how it's funded, um, UTC through the um, state, through their state funding and through their um, kind of entitlement grants for CTE pays for the instructor. Um, employs the instructor, kind of like J, in a JMG model where they work at our school, but they're employed by this other organization. So they'd be employed by UTC. And um, provides all of the equipment and supplies needed for the program in perpetuity. Um, the school's responsibility really is to, you know, find a space and support students enrollment in the program. Um, and so we, you know, are in really beginning phases of thinking about how we can do this, but it has to move pretty quickly. So we wanted to bring this to you all just to, you know, fill you in and let you know, this is something that um, we'd like to pursue and see if you have any feedback or questions. Meredith has a little more information that she can share about the um, the topics that we're looking at probably being the four topics for the program and anything she feels like I left out that would be helpful to. Right now, Meredith?
Um, so the, I, I want to acknowledge um, our school counseling staff and their role in this. Holly Gunn has been participating in the weekly um, get to know UTC programming that is offered on-site to educators regionally who want a, a, a an evening-long dive into the different programs. And um, you know, while she's participating in that, she's having conversations with students um, in ninth grade in particular, um, with whom she has, or about whom she has concerns. If those students aren't able to latch into something that feels engaging and relevant to them um, before eleventh grade, which is typically when um, CTE programming becomes available to students. And so in our conversations um, with school counseling staff and with um, um, UTC uh, staff about the, uh, our enrollment trends, we identified um, four programs that um, right now where there are the leads in terms of a proposal for who, what we would offer. Um, and those programs are carpentry, small engines, emergency medical responder and culinary. Um, and the hope is that the, that collection of programs, um, one serves as a gateway to other UTC programming. Um, carpentry, it was explained to me, is, is a program that um, well, I'll back up. The, the, the frame for um, the exploratory program is that students receive instruction in twenty-five percent of the foundational skills in each of the programs that are offered. Um, so twenty-five, the, the, the first twenty-five percent of, of instruction in carpentry um, is in skills that translate across many other programs. Um, so if a student is learning that first twenty-five percent of carpentry, then they're also set up really well to go into plumbing. They're also set up really well to go into electrical. And so carpentry is sort of like a launch program um, for students who, who would want to pursue, um, you know, other programming or carpentry for students who um, would be really loving their um, their shop class, you know, if it were nineteen ninety-five, but you know, to whom that class just isn't available anymore. Um, small engine similarly, um, you know, it can be uh, offered on a scale that is totally doable within a, a non um, industrial space, but then would also translate to uh, many of UTC's other programs. Um, emergency medical responder is a program that um, comes with a certificate that um, that qualifies the, the holder as a um, a first responder on a job site that is recognized across many industries. So um, not only is it a way to, you know, kind of dip your toes in um, a, like a health occupations context, but if you do end up becoming um, you know, somebody who pursues a, a diesel equipment um, line of work, um, you bring with you the added benefit of being um, licensed as a, as a first responder on the job site. And then finally culinary as um, a, as an avenue that is of interest to some of our students as, as a profession and as a trade. But then also um, lives potentially in that realm of real-world skills that um, came up so frequently in the surveys around our strategic plan. Um, you know, and we acknowledge that uh, people probably mean different things when they're talking about real-world skills, but culinary as, as one of them that, you know, could prepare our students to um, make themselves a meal from um, Hannaford versus um, McDonald's. So um, our hope is that offering that, that combination of four programs will appeal to students who um, are, are going to be heading into two years of UTC as soon as they hit eleventh grade and are holding their breath otherwise until they get there. But that also would appeal to students who are just interested in, in learning about um, the, the applicability of those skills to their life, no matter what their um, career path ends up being. The, the framework for instruction is that um, the instructor hired would offer um, a discrete period, just like other folks in the building in terms of um, you know, teaching three out of four blocks each day. Class size would range from eight to twelve students in each of those. And so we're talking about a sizable portion of the, the OHS population who would be able to access this programming um, as an elective offering. Uh, UTC is really excited about the fact that we offer technical math. Um, that is a, a math class that um, many of the students on-site at UTC often uh, take in, in fulfillment of their requirements for either uh, an associate's degree through EMCC or through one of the pathways programs to one of the state universities. Um, and they are excited about the fact that we have an instructor on-site who's teaching that, who may be willing to collaborate on, you know, some of the the mathematical units um, in a, in a way that is, um, we're hoping will help break down some of those uh, discipline barriers in between content areas and um, create a context for a feeling of relevance that transcends the student's time in the, in the exploratory class and that, that touches all part of their work here.
Sounds great.
Questions or?
So if I'm hearing this correctly, we potentially have, would it be four different instructors from UTC or do they cross?
No, that's a really good question. It's something that I just didn't understand how it works. It's one instructor and really they support that instructor with uh, support from their instructors at UTC to either provide training or materials to lead into that foundational training. So they really have to be, you know, open to, they have to be certifiable in one of the four areas. But um, they're looking for people who have enough skills to pick up instructional responsibility for all four.
I mean, it's just similar, small engine to culinary is like a.
Right, I know. We've said that and, and they said. That's, well.
But that being said, it's introduction in each one of those.
Right, yeah.
One of the justifications for the emergency medical responder as one of the programs was that that's a um, that's a ready-made curriculum um, that it was developed by a third party that can be, you know, delivered by an instructor who isn't necessarily um, having to build their own. And so you, you know, UTC is Is one of the regional centers that is running these programs and, you know, there are other parts of the state where they reach down into middle school. And so the, the model is, is filling out in terms of, you know, how to make all of these programs within reach of the instructor who's um. In many cases, only industry experienced in one of the four areas.
You have the space for this?
We're currently exploring space options. But we think we can come up with creative.
My number one space, is that like one? If, if, if we do, would it be one space for all? Would this person would have one classroom all day?
Um, we're still exploring. We don't have an answer for that.
Along Jake's lines. I don't know, you could do culinary and small engine.
Yeah, and they've said that culinary is not, it's like, we're not gonna be able to do. We're not gonna have a full kitchen. And, and she says that's okay, that they can design some programming that's, you know, using, you know. Very, you know, portable kind of. Culinary. I don't, I don't know what exactly that means, but she was not.
Making induction burners for like sixty, eighty bucks a piece and they can do a lot with the single one, but induction burner.
Just when we thought we were getting rid of your office.
No. So it seems, it seems like you think you'll be able to come up with space.
Yeah, we, we have some options we're exploring right now. So when we have more info, we have to share that. We just don't have answers to provide.
So like in the last strategic plan, we were like, you have some thoughts about ways to like do something like this. Did you know this was gonna happen?
Uh, no, actually. This has been very like. Surprised that we were, our number was called to say, hey, come on down.
And both sounds like we're called yearly, right?
We were, yeah.
And so wait, are you right? So does this something that we continue or?
Yes, and I asked that question. Is this just, you know, as long as grant funds um. Allow, and she said, no, it's, it's built into our state subsidy for the staffing costs. And um the equipment costs, it, you know, there's usually a, a. Outlay at the beginning to outfit a program that's more significant. And then they would use budgeted funds to replenish, you know, supply needs from year to year. So it's, you know, a way for, for the state and, and our region to promote CTE programming for students to really keep it in their. You know, feel the vision and keep them motivated to do well enough in their classes so they're eligible to go to UTC. And give them an idea of what UTC can offer them. So I think it's a smart model to. To utilize and it's a win-win for us, right? To, to get these really, I think, engaging electives for almost no cost for our students.
Well, that's awesome. Are we, are we locked into those four in perpetuity or is there a way to change?
I don't think we're locked in.
No, we're not locked in. It would just be a matter of um, I mean, the, the idea is, is to offer the students what they want. Um, and so the, as long as the, um, as long as the faculty who is brought on board. Uh, you know, if that faculty is, is the right person for the role, then it would be a matter of adjusting within their um, their zone of, of. Licensure and, you know, ability to develop new programming. Uh, but no, we're not, we're not locked in anywhere.
And licensure for this, I, it is very flexible um for CTE. Folks, there, there are some really flexible certification pathways for people who have just industry experience to bring into these roles.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, I'm also super supportive. Of course, I'm really excited this is happening. Uh, I think it ties in nicely of a future conversation about the board report, like meeting students where they're at, providing alternative pathways for. Students to demonstrate excellence and interests that aren't on the, you know, the typical path of A P or honors or whatever. So, and then allowing your students that might not find, you know, traditional classroom um education as engaging. So that they don't seem as promising in those traditional sort of assessment um we, means. And if they're not doing well as a ninth and tenth grader, they're not gonna qualify for UTC in their eleventh, seventh grade. So if they can shine. In that ninth and tenth grade, they get access to the full UTC experience, which is, you know, really remarkable. So it's a, it's a wonderful set of doors and I'm so appreciative of Meredith and Meredith and, and um, uh, and Polly Goddard. You know, for, for, for jumping on this opportunity and for promoting it. You can cook on small engines. This is some great TikToks that people, you know, the manifold, you know. So there, there's crossovers. There are some tinfoil and saying.
Oh, you need anything?
No, no. And I asked, there's not an M O U that we sign. Um, it's. Just looking for, you know, your support and I assumed that we would have that support. I just wanted to. Give you a chance to weigh in if you had any terms or questions.
And unanimous and enthusiastic in their support, so.
Um, last thing, just, just a reminder that our um. Next board meeting will be uh really focused on budget, you know, a lot. We're bringing back information next meeting and it's. Next Wednesday, it's on an odd night. So I just wanna put another reminder in your. Brain about that.
Same time.
Same time. Right, that's all?
Okay. Uh, next up, board survey. So just to set the stage for people who don't know, um. We've been, gosh, five, seven years now. We've had a practice of three sixty surveys. Three sixty being, you know, the degrees of a compass, everybody above and below, and we do a three sixty survey. Typically in February of the board, a self, self-evaluation for the board. Uh, we do a three sixty for the superintendent typically in March and then three sixties for the principals and school climate in April. Uh, and, and we are not gonna do this tonight, but there's typically the board survey is followed up by a board self-evaluation, which we'll. Probably do in, in about a month or so. Um. We did not participate in the board survey, so we'll do our own self-reflection in public. So uh, it was open for, I think, three or four weeks. We got uh forty, forty odd, forty-five, I think. Respondents, about half community, half teachers, uh, some administrators and other things, but I lumped them into. Those two groups, community and staff to uh, you know, preserve some anonymity. Um. It's, that's about the same level of response we've had the last couple of years. So the response rate, you know, uh. Whether that's good or bad response rate, you can have an opinion, but especially with the staff, I appreciate that this, you know. There's another required activity. It's a volunteer activity, so I appreciate their participating. Uh, you guys all got the summary results yesterday and I asked you all to reflect on them and. Anybody uh wants to can share some thoughts. Uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and start out. Uh, the response from the parents was, I think, pretty typical of what we've seen. Most of the parents are. Reasonably happy, you know, so just for people's information, the scale of one to seven, one is very unhappy, seven's very. Happy. Most of the parents are, you know, five to six. There were a handful of parents that were ones and twos, and that also is typical in a given year. Somebody who. Unfortunately had a bad experience of, of some aspect of our schools and is letting us know about that. Obviously, this is not a random sample. This is a selective sample and uh. People with strong opinions and strong opinions are most often negative are the ones most likely to participate. I don't say that to discount, but. You know, we look at those uh strong negative opinions to see if there's anything we can do to address it. Um. As far as the comments, I think the one unifying comment across many parents, I think five or six people commented on this in some detail. Was the, do we stretch all students or challenge all students? Uh. Right, one of our three core values wa, was meeting every student where they're at and moving them forward. And there was a pretty strong response from parents about, no, we're still not doing this or. You're finally starting to do it. Thank goodness. Please do it more and faster. Right? So there's a pretty enthusiastic effort. At the same time of the acceleration efforts, at the same time, there was some uh perception that we're still not uh picking that box for at least one group of students. Teachers uh were a pretty notably strong opinion. Uh. Teachers have always had a lower opinion of the board than parents. That's probably structural. Uh, but the, the teachers this year were extremely. Unhappy and expressed that voluminously. Uh, there. There were teachers in different places and that may map the teachers in different schools. Some, some teachers were quite happy, sixes or fives and sevens and. Uh, expressed appreciation for things the board were doing, but if I'm to accurately reflect the overall teacher gestalt, and again. We didn't ask about schools, so I could speculate that these vary across schools, but I don't know that. Um. There were a lot of ones and twos, more ones and twos than we've ever gotten as a board before and since we've been doing this, which is six or seven. I think two thousand seventeen might have been the first year we did this. So eight years of surveys. I just wanna say that out loud, noted, heard, the teachers are very unhappy with what the board is doing.
Or staff.
Or staff, yeah, right, yeah. There, there were staff members and administrators in there too. So collectively staff. Is very unhappy with what the board is doing. Um, in terms of why that is and what we could do to change that, it was less clear. Um, there were several things that had mentioned. I'm just gonna try and tick them off to show that I've heard them. Uh, and. You know, maybe in some cases, a little bit of a response. Uh. There were a number of comments about we don't hear what's being said in the surveys, right? So there's some anger about the survey process itself. Guess I just have to draw a distinction between hearing and doing what we hear. Right? Just because somebody asked for something in a survey doesn't mean the board is necessarily gonna be able to do that. Uh, most fundamentally, we almost always get contradictory opinions in these surveys. Some people want this, some people don't want this. Right? A good example is actually, if you look at the comments, the parents really wanted more acceleration and the teachers wanted less acceleration, right? So. Somebody's always gonna be unhappy, but I just wanna draw a distinction between hearing and doing. Uh. I, I would pretty categorically reject that we don't hear. I think it, you know. Consistently, at least four, if not five, board members have read every single comment and have. Thought and reflected about them when we take the time to publicly share. We can't go through every comment, but we do take time to, to go through things. So. Uh, I do think we hear, uh, we don't always agree and we can't always do what's being said, but we do hear. Uh, and we do appreciate the time put into feedback. Pay was mentioned. Um. I'm just gonna say, if you're talking about the contracts we had a year or two ago, you're right. I think those contracts stunk. We were. Had three-year contracts and inflation went crazy in a way that nobody, neither us nor the union anticipated and we were, we were out of sync with the marketplace. Um. That said, we have a new teacher contract in place and we're working on a new uh EPS support staff contract. And once that contract signs, I would like to have that conversation again. I, I. By and large, would like to always be in a place where we're very competitive with the districts around us and offer a competitive salary. And that's, that's our. Target point. And I think after this new contract gets signed, I'd like to make the argument. And again, taking into account the total contract, right, pay and benefits. You know, you, you could go to industry, uh, who might pay you more, a dollar more an hour because you know, benefits or something. The total package, I would, I would be happy to have the conversation with anybody, again, with the new contracts, acknowledging the problem with the old contracts. We hear this every year, but it came out a little more, and I've never addressed it before, but it came out a little more strongly this year. So. A lot of people who said, well, the board shouldn't really have anything to do with education. You don't have education degrees. You shouldn't be talking about what's happening with education. I'd make a couple of points. Um. But first off, you know, it's just not realistic that teachers are gonna be left to do exactly whatever they wanna do, right? Everybody has a boss. Everybody has accountability and. Uh, that's just how the world works. I, I'd love to have a job where I get a guaranteed salary and don't have to be accountable to anybody, but that doesn't exist. But more importantly, and this is a little philosophical, I'd like to back up and point out that um. The community pays for the schools, right? Taxpayers, the citizens pay for the schools. And the taxpayers and the citizens expect to have some input. They don't wanna walk into your classroom and, you know, say. Sally should be teaching X and Joe shouldn't be using book Y, but uh they wanna have some big picture input about the values. And priorities that are going into a school. And that is the way school, schooling in America is structured. You can go to. Florida or Texas where it's structured through the State Department of Education and the legislature. You can go to New England where it's structured through local school boards, but. People pay for the schools and people expect to have some pay about what's happening in the schools and that's not gonna change. That said, I would like to point out, I think we have a much more uh collaborative. Uh, context and structure here in this district than you can find in many districts. Starting with, you know, we, the board has, the board and really central administration has very. Little uh desire to get into the details of what's happening in classrooms. And I know you all know their districts nearby where they're still pacing. Not just every classroom in the third grade is on the same textbook, but they're on the same page of the same textbook. So. You know, we're, we're, that's not something, that's not the ordinary way. We're not contemplating that. And uh, the board continues to offer, the board's vision has always been collaborative, right? We don't think uh. We don't think uh, we know that things are not gonna get anywhere without the teachers, but we think the teachers, you know, benefit from having input and feedback and ideas too. And it's, it's always, the goal is always in collaboration. We have these multi-stakeholder groups, even things that are strictly board like policy. Are open and we've had teachers drop in, we've had parents drop in at policy committee meetings and that's. Actually, and not just drop in and watch their public meetings, but uh comment and participate. That's not an opportunity that you have in that many districts. So. You know, there, there's a vision that's collaborative, but there's not a vision, the board just disappearing and handing it over a check. So. Uh, that's, that's, that's how it is. That's not gonna change. Um. There were a few comments about personnel. I'm just gonna point out that's against the law for us to be talking about personnel in a public forum. Just remind the board of that too. So I'm not gonna address any personnel comments. There were a number of comments about uh academic changes that have been implemented and I'm not gonna pass through all those in detail and most of those. In fact, I think all of those that I saw commented didn't come from the board, but uh the ones I'm aware of, I'm strongly supportive of. So. That is what I heard. Those are some of my thoughts about what I'd heard. I'd like to stop. I've, I've talked for a bit. I'd like to let my colleagues. Uh, share any other reflections they had on hearing what, you know, our three sixty community had to say.
So, I don't wanna repeat anything you said, I, for the, for the staff. Survey, I had four things I wrote down. You actually mentioned three of them. The one you did mention though, that I kinda picked up on is there was almost a. Well, there was theme, at least to me, of students not being held accountable. Um, that kinda jumped out to me as something that wasn't mentioned. Um. And then with the community one, um. You know, I really just wrote down two themes. You kinda hit on both of them. Um, students not being challenged probably more in a specific building than another building. And then the board not listening to others, but you can address that as well. Um. Do you know, one thing you didn't mention, um, obviously my. Understanding is that the employee response rate is better than the community response rate. Do you know what the response rates are roughly? I mean, I imagine they're in the single digits, right?
Yeah, so twenty, twenty out of a hundred is like a twenty percent response rate per staff. Hundred and sixty with, yeah, with it. I mean, probably the rate was much higher among teachers than among.
Right, but for staff overall, we have about a hundred and sixteen, twenty.
Right, so twelve percent.
And then obviously total.
Communities, two and a half percent. Yeah.
Which I would consider primarily parents. Obviously.
Right, that would be. Two and a half percent of parents that included all taxpayers would be.
Right, but it doesn't go out to.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, compared to our other surveys, the board survey gets less interest than the superintendent or D E I surveys, but. Not, you know, not. Strategic plan survey is the one that's actually gotten the highest feedback, several hundred. Uh. But uh, this is the one that gets the least feedback, which that's probably appropriate, but the board does is a little um abstract and. Aloof, especially probably to parents, but um, yeah. Other things, Jake? And, anybody else?
There's some things, um. Let's see. Uh, I guess the, on the key, key, the, like, you're, you're saying. Worried about students being left behind. There's a little bit too of like, or, or students, yeah. Like, I think there was some concern on the other, in terms of the. Uh, if students are accelerated, what that does, the other, the students that are left behind. I guess there was that sort of concern about acceleration being bad, I guess. And maybe that was more in the staff, but I, and so I saw that. Um, and a little bit of that concern sort of, I felt like connected to sort of the, the growth. Mindset not being in middle school classes, they pointed out in particular, maybe more. Um, and I feel like that, I'm hoping with sort of the strategic plan works with like active learning and, and we'll be addressing some of that kind of like. Moving towards more, less, like there, I think there were several comments on like worksheets and things, moving towards more. Hopefully we can steer things a little bit to address some of those problems. Um, I guess. Uh, I, I want to think, Brian, I, I, it's really great that you print these out. It's really like helpful to see, you know. Is it possible in the future to like make, like add like the row number for the individual comments in from the data frame? Cause there's these comments that repeat throughout. I don't know. I think it's the same person in multiple places, but I'm not ever a hundred percent sure if it's. Multiple people. So like, maybe we could just see, oh yeah, that's row number, what we're saying. Yeah, sometimes they refer to see my comment as well, but. So I had a little trouble discerning whether it was the same person over and over again or like.
Definitely a case of somebody's, but you're gonna see the same comment.
Like footprint the data with the row.
Yeah, I could, I, that's a good idea. I mean. Yeah, I could, I, that's a good idea, I mean, I hesitate, I have a spreadsheet, I could give you the spreadsheet, but.
Yeah.
That's a hard thing to digest, but maybe just the row numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so. Parent number six.
Yeah.
Parent number six.
Cause there's a, there's some like, some of the, someone seemed to hate one of us a lot. I don't know, maybe it's sort of being, sort of, or sort of hurtful, so. I guess the other things, it's like. It seems some of these comments too were like from the teachers, it seemed like saying that the board not developing, like, we're, we're not really affecting anything, it's really administrative. Doing things, and on the other hand, we're all too powerful and we're like affecting too much, and so, sort of like, I should only hold both of those. And I guess the other things, you know, there was a lot of the sense that like. Well, like the first is there's something about phones that I don't understand what that means, but there are a number of. Like I've said in the past a lot, that I feel like, like I really don't understand what's happening in the schools and the teachers, and I think some of that was like, the board doesn't know what's happening. I guess there's part of me that, like, I don't know, I really want to feel more connected and know more, so like, I had this thought, which. It would be fun to just go sit in the school someday, just me and on the call, hey, if we each, we could take turns and people could just. Come by and talk to us or something, like some way to like, you know, because I know we're not supposed to like go out and like. Talk to teachers because we have authority and stuff, but like, if there was a way for me or anyone to like sit for the day and work and people wanted to come chat informally. I'd love to get to know the school and the teachers and community more, because I do feel disconnected, so like. I'd love more opportunities to just informally like, through, because I know, I ace someone, but like. Middle school, high school, not so much, so like, I love that idea, or something where it's like. Outside of these sort of formal scary processes, just kind of getting to understand. The pulse of things, I feel like that would help and that may diffuse some of this or something. So, I think, I think those are the things I was noticing. And like, yeah, and I don't know where, where a lot of these comments are coming from. About like our responses to people, because it's not like there's many people ever watching, it's already crazy, so I'm not sure if the, if the like are. The attendances or the board and board members comes from these meetings or from policies, like committees or. Other interactions and, so I'm not sure like what.
And some of them may be secondhand.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I can tell you one thing that was attributed to a person and there never happened.
Okay.
Right, so.
So, I'm sorry, no, so what helped, like, when I read these, I look for themes.
Yeah.
Like things that come up over and over and over again, not necessarily the one offs. You know.
That's true.
And on your, well, way back, I do think the teachers and the parents were in totally different places on acceleration, I think those comments were almost perfectly separated by category. And to your point about the kind of drop in. We've tried that before, and actually, I think the suggestion came from Shawna, and so. When they were doing the kind of rotation PD, right, where many, many academy where you could go to any of. Six events, we had an event where we had board members. First time we did it, we had twenty people show up, teachers and staff show up and. It was a really good conversation, and so we said, well, we should do that again, we did it next year. And one person showed up and I think she actually wanted to leave and go to another one, but she felt bad for us, so Mark was at both of these, he remembers.
And maybe, maybe it could be less formal, maybe it could just be like everyone's, one of us is there in, in the building or something at a time, and I don't know, I don't.
Yeah, worth, worth continuing to think about.
I wasn't there for that, so like. I would love the many ideas for how to.
Anybody else?
I guess the one thing I would, I would say that's a little bit different from what's, and I agree with everything. So, the one thing I haven't added that's maybe a little bit different is. To me, yeah, certainly, certainly staff is a little. Less pleased than normal, they're never super pleased with us, but they're maybe less super pleased than, than most years, so. I don't think that, that didn't surprise me, on the other hand, the community satisfaction was a little bit lower. It seems, and then spend recent years and. You know, really, when you go and compare the needs, they're, they're really not all that different. Except for one category, there's a pretty big gap between community and staff, but for the most part, the needs are, are pretty close, that being said. What they're unhappy or happy about tends to be quite different, right? And in some cases, diametrically opposed to each other, you know, so they all have community unhappiness about this. Whereas, you know, staff would want more of this and vice versa, so I. How you reconcile that? Is a, is a difficult question, I think it's one worth thinking about, but it also points, it also points out the fact that. The board has a lot of different audiences and. Different groups that it, that should strive to be counted, so.
I guess just briefly adding on to that, the theme that I noticed was, or, you know, trying to find a theme, something consistent, was something I, around communication. So it might be that folks don't feel like they have an understanding of what the board is doing, which I sympathize to, I never watched board meetings before becoming a board member. School runs pretty well, wasn't super worried about it. And, you know, attending a two, three, four hour meeting is a pretty tough haul for, for anybody after working the day or having, having kids. So, I know we've tossed this ball around, I don't want to keep tossing around some way of. Connecting with the community, there were some responses about, you know, that tension between wanting to know more, but also not having the bandwidth for a newsletter. And I know we have these amazing student board reps, and I was thinking about how they're, they're nicely positioned, one. There will always be new, right, never more than two years, so they're always have a fresh set of eyes. And I, and I wonder if there's a potential there for being sort of an outsider insider, being able to kind of capture ideas or think of novel ways of connecting with the community or. So that was something I took away was, you know, maybe not, not knowing how to know more or wanting to know more, but not wanting to. Watch, watch me, me talk about it. Thank you for participating, all, everyone, you know, out there or wherever that participated.
Yeah, I mean, that was a question we asked about, how would you like to connect, and it was kind of. As expected, kind of frustratingly all over the place, some people wanted. Podcasts or emails or, there were a couple of low hanging fruit, there was a suggestion that you could subscribe to a list where you would get the minutes emailed to you. And I don't know how much work that would be to set up, but if we could get that in an automated format. That might be, some people, me among them prefer to digest information visually rather than auditorially. Right, and that's a nice, especially as we were commenting earlier, Rachel does a very good job, so. You know, I don't know how hard setting up the automated email list, but the minutes are probably a pretty concrete way of communicating information and. We've tried having like a board corner in the superintendent's newsletter, we could go back to that perhaps too, but. I think it's.
For mentioned that people don't read.
Right, yeah, yeah. Anybody else have more thoughts?
Like on the graphs, like, the one thing that, I don't know, what's most concerning to me is the, the learning mindset on the community, like the big six, the bar, the, the. Number one, like worst score, highest bar, that seems like the graphic, and it looks like to a lot of people this.
Yeah, I'm just losing battery here, but. I step back a little bit philosophically and long-term trajectory. You know, I think the survey, I don't think we ran a survey in 2020 if memory serves with COVID, but. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, it was clear to us that there was an increased level of dissatisfaction. Again, probably more in the staff than the parents, but. I don't know if any of us knew what to do, it was kind of like, well, COVID, you know, everybody's burned out, COVID's been tough. What's, what's, not to invalidate that that was real, but it existed, but. We didn't know what to do about it. And I feel like, you know, as, as we've gotten further and further from COVID and things have gotten theoretically better and better. Actually, people's attitudes or feelings or impressions have gotten worse and worse and worse. Right, at least as marked by the survey, and, and I think in some level of conversation that I hear around the community too. In particular, in the buildings with the staff. So I, I think it's kind of reaching a point where we need to step back and say. Okay, it's not just COVID, it's not going to just fade away as COVID fades away, not because it's ever going to fade away, right? And I know people are in different places on how far we are and that, I don't want to rekindle that debate, although it is two agenda items away. But I think it's time to start having a conversation about, okay, this is the new normal, right? And the new normal is different than the old normal, and. I don't think anybody here tonight has a solution, but I think it's time to start having a conversation from that place, that there is a new normal. Students are different, education is going to need to be different, and. On the one hand, that can sound intimidating to talk about having to adapt to a new normal, but on the other hand, I think it's maybe also got the seeds of a solution to start having. These conversations about there is a new normal and we need to address the new normal. And the teachers can look at that as, oh no, even more work, but I think the teachers, hopefully also, we can. Look at that as, if we're addressing the reality, that's actually addressing their job dissatisfaction and making things. In the long run, better and easier, and fair as well, so I think that framing is starting to become increasingly important, and I, I think. I didn't start the strategic plan with that mind frame, I thought COVID was not going to be part of the strategic plan, and it's not, and board COVID has not mentioned anything we've done in the strategic plan. But I look at the items that have risen to the top and they're all some combination of, you know, COVID. Modern student, social media student, all these themes of engagement and wellbeing and things like that. I, I feel like the strategic plan has kind of ended up in that same place of, okay, it's time to start talking about the new normal. So, you know, in terms of specifics. I felt like I heard the teachers' staff were really unhappy, but I, I didn't hear there were these huge things that I could go check, we could change that or we could fix that. Or in a couple of cases that were willing to change or fix that, but. I do think the bigger picture, this is what I take out of it, it's something that needs to change, is having this conversation at a deeper level. Education, you know, a virus, nano, nanomillimeters in size ran through the world and education got turned upside down. And it's not going to go back, I think we were all hoping it was just going to go back, and it's not going to go back, so I think starting to have conversations at that level is an important thing. That may be too high level or philosophical, but that's, that's, that's kind of what, when I really, what, you know. Okay, so you heard the survey, what do you take out of it, that's what I take out of it.
So, I guess going back pre-COVID, were these concerns not, how is it different, yes?
Well, so at the level of the surveys, the surveys were pretty different. Teachers were not as happy with us as the parents, but the teachers would not. I wouldn't qualify them as unhappy in the way that I would clearly qualify, it's a very infraction, again, not universal, not even. Probably two thirds, right, it's not like all but one teacher, it's probably two thirds of the staff are unhappy, but no, it wasn't like that. Pre-COVID. And if you look at statistics with students, you know, horrible statistics like suicide rates and. Some of it was very much COVID, some of these trends, on the other hand, very much pre-existed COVID as well. There's some longer term trends, which is why I think I invoked social media. But the two together have really kind of created a, a perfect storm. So, but yeah, the, I mean, Mark and Jake, you were both here too, you can tell me if they have a different opinion, but they were qualitatively different pre-COVID. Would you agree?
Yeah. Were the same kinds of, different kinds of concerning, you know, like.
Oh, I mean, the issue du jour changes, right, like Smees was an issue for a while, acceleration's an issue now. Some of the core themes of the, I don't know what the board is doing, the board. Board is too, like you called out, the board is too powerful, the board doesn't actually do anything. You know, those, those things have been around forever, but what, I mean, honestly, what changed for me most was the. Kind of the quantitative. The tone and the quantitative scale seemed qualitatively different from previous years, well, previous, pre-COVID years.
Yes, I didn't think it was overall that, as bad as you're painting it, actually, like. It's, they're certainly so happy, because I don't, I, I didn't.
It's mixed for sure, well, they look at parents.
There's a number of people liking staff, dude, or happy eating, you're a lot supported.
Yeah, there's, there's lots of sentiments from staff, right, and there's lots of expressions of appreciation from staff too.
Everyone hates us.
Well, and some of the things like paid for staff is understandable, we're at the end of a three-year contract with, you know, recent record inflation, so. You know, we're in negotiations and, you know, those opinions are bound to change after our contract materializes, so. That at least feels good, I mean, those are understandable, and the board and the superintendent agree that we just have lagged inflation, so. Those are at least actionable or being acted upon, like, really couldn't have been acted on previously because they're in a contract, so. You get kind of stuck, it's both beneficial to be in a contract, but it can also be difficult to pivot when things go awry.
Yeah, yeah.
I think one other thing, just not to, to drive this discussion out, but it fits in what Brian's saying, is that education doesn't exist in the vacuum, and. There is like a lot of data out there showing that. The United States are becoming, are becoming increasingly, or have been becoming increasingly unhappy and increasingly. Agitated for really the last two to three decades, and that, and that COVID exacerbated that, and so again, education doesn't. It's just in vacuum, you can look at, you know, I don't really care what metric you pick, but you look at, you know. The metrics of how Americans are feeling about just about anything, it's not good, and it's gotten progressively worse. Over the last twenty to thirty years, and COVID really spiked that up, and it's not, it's not, nothing's improved, so.
Anything else, or, I still have more meat to get to, so. Yeah, yeah. Superintendent, 360 survey, so by policy, we do do a superintendent 360 survey, by policy, the. Questionnaire has to be agreed to by the board, obviously, you know, it would be possible for. The board to exclude the results by picking the questions inappropriately, that's not, not the intention, but the checkpoint is the board has to approve the survey. So my proposal would be that we run with the survey, we had last year with maybe one or two tweaks, and again, the survey we ran last year. Starts with SIX, ISLIC International Society for Super, I can't remember, but it's like this. What's that?
School leaders.
School leaders, thank you, yeah, it's, it's basically the professional National Superintendent Society. And they've done an update, but their update, I think we have agreed in the past is worse, it's got more questions and more technical questions. So it's six standards, vision for learning, school culture and instructional program, management. Collaboration with community, integrity and fairness. Larger context in terms of the political, socially, economic, legal and cultural context. And then we have asked, not necessarily a whole list of board rules, but subset of goals, and last year. We asked about COVID, we asked about buildings, and we asked about DEI. So I would propose we keep the same six ISLIC standards, one to seven scale, then an open-ended, tell us anything you want. And an open-ended question at the end of it, tell us anything you want, but I would propose we maybe change the goals. So, I'm not sure, to be honest, I would ask any of those three questions about COVID or. Construction or DEI, but I'm not sure I necessarily have a proposal of anything else we would want to ask this year. We could just drop all three of the gold questions and go with the six ISLIC standards.
I agree that the gold questions seem outdated, it's.
Anybody have other thoughts?
And that's fine, I do, I do think that we should check and see if there's anything there in the particular ones, I'm.
Yeah.
I'm definitely fine with dropping.
I think it would be helpful, and I'm not sure that you get this when you ask it in terms of how the superintendent's doing on this. But sometimes you get, you know, constructive suggestions on. Different aspects of the goals. You know, particularly some of those where we really got conflicting information on work and stretch all students, maybe ask a question on that. And then the mental health, emotional wellbeing, we're really working on, you know, developing. Goals and strategies around that, it might be helpful to see if folks have some concrete suggestions here.
I mean, we did do that on the board survey, where we just asked, you know, what, what suggestions would you have?
Yeah.
Or we could ask on the acceleration, we could ask, do you like acceleration on the seven, I'm not. Sure, that's the most constructive question to ask, but we could ask an open-ended question about. What are your thoughts or experiences with acceleration?
Well, given that we get a slightly higher return rate, we might.
Yeah.
Get more information.
So ask a question about, what are your, open-ended question about thoughts or experiences about acceleration? So ask a question about what are your open-ended question about thoughts or experiences about acceleration and a um. Open-ended question about uh, what could be done to, for well-being of staff and students?
Yeah, I'm not sure I would say acceleration, I think it's support and stretch all students.
Okay.
More global.
Okay, yeah. Right.
And you know, strategic plan, I'm not sure about that um. Asking that at this point, probably next year after it's been adopted and where people have a chance to see it. That would be the time to ask that question. Yeah, we've just asked a couple of rounds of public input so far, it's this cross stakeholder committee, so. The work has been in committee since fall.
Yep. Everybody okay with that?
I agree.
Okay, so we'll drop three goals, keep the success look standards and we'll add two open-ended questions. Uh, challenges all students and um, well-being.
And is there a general open ended or?
There's a general open ended at the end, yep. Okay. I am aware that we have about four people are probably sitting here waiting for item nine A. Do we, well, we only have one more item. But it should take a while, do we wanna jump to nine A and then go back to uh, eight C?
Is COVID gonna take a while?
Yeah.
I don't know if it is or isn't. It has in the past, it may not. Yeah, all right, let, let's just stick with the agenda, okay, um. CDC changer guidelines, we have, as a general rule, track the CDC guidelines uh, by policy and also just as a practice of. Board votes, so Meredith and I talked about this and um. We just thought we should bring it to a board vote again and update, also because of SRF funds, we're required to have a. COVID policy, so we should update COVID policy to match. Uh, the, the new CDC guidelines and also to just kind of simplify and boil them down to basically. Making it clear we're tracking CDC guidance going forward, so that um, could theoretically be the last time we revisit the COVID guidelines. What else would you add to that, Meredith?
Yeah, just in consultation with Karen, uh, she knew this was coming and it kind of been plugged into the um. You know, school health nurse, school nurse network about what was coming and, and. Is supportive of making this change, and I'll speak for her, she's here, thank you for joining us tonight, Karen. Um, I, I think what's, what's um, good about this changing guidance is it's become really guidance about. Respiratory viruses, because um. You know, in healthcare, what I, what I read, when I read these guidelines is, um, COVID has become. Like flu and other respiratory viral illnesses for, you know, most individuals, and so this guidance, they've given aligns. Um, responses for schools and other organizations other than healthcare to take. Um, whether it's um, COVID or some other viral illness, illness, so um. That, what this takes away is the required five-day isolation. Um, and it takes away the required five days masking after five days isolation. And it changes to really what guidance has been longstanding. Um, around, you know, twenty-four hours fever-free without fever-reducing medications and improving symptoms. To return to school, there is a recommendation for um. Masking, enhanced hygiene practices, distancing and, and take steps for cleaner air. Um, once normal activities are resumed, um, but it's, you know, raised as uh, recommendations. Um, and I think, you know, one thing that, that Karen knows that we're seeing, and I think it's a national trend is. Um, you know, people aren't testing like they were, so COVID is walking around and, and I think part of that is. Uh, avoiding having to isolate, um, and so having guidance that feels more. Um, like what people are, are going to kind of abide by. Um, matches with, I think, where the CDC feels like the transmission and uh, I'm not sure how the word um, impacts. Of contracting COVID um, is more aligned with other viral illnesses at this point. Karen, would you add anything to that?
Um, hold on, hi, um, just that, you know, it's just becoming another virus that's out there and. Um, we have built, now there's so many people that are not as vulnerable because. We all have some sort of immunity, whether it be through vaccination or exposure. And they're finding that um. You know, even though we are around people every day that are contagious and all of that, we're just not getting it like we were, you know. So they're not finding that it's effective anymore, that we need to mask. Um, unless people individually feel that they are still. They're asking individual people to make that decision. So, um, it seems to be working, it's been kind of moving to the east. Using this for a while, using this model for a while and it um. And it seems to be working, it hasn't shown an increase in COVID really.
So any questions, comments from the board?
I still do have um, you know, tests available, I've, the federal government has been. Providing tests for us to be able to send home with people, so I've offered those to families and I do have families that ask for them still and I do. Encourage, you know, that if you're sick with anything, please stay home, or if I have a kid at school that is not feeling well, I do. Try to test them and um, try and still give them parameters, it's just we, we're not as firm with the five-day isolation. But we do definitely monitor the kids that are sick. And staff.
Great, I, I mean, I think you and I talked about voting, was your thought to bring it back another time or?
Um, I, I think in prior um. Instances, sometimes we voted and sometimes we haven't, we've just, you know, determined is this, are we still following CDC guidance? And if so, you know, this is the new guidance and we have agreed in other times, we voted, so it's up to the pleasure of the board. I, I think I, I would like to get out what we're doing sooner rather than later, because this guy has changed on the first. Wanted to, you know, bring it to you, so we waited for this meeting.
Yeah, let's vote, I mean, especially because this could potentially be the last policy that kind of sits up there for a long time on the website. I would make a motion to adopt the COVID uh, guidelines now reading RSU. RSU twenty-six COVID and other respiratory viral illnesses guidelines as presented, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion or questions?
Only comment I will make is it, is for those of us, well, the three of us who are here through the duration of it, it feels like we've done a full circle, right? Like. It started, things got bad, 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 and then less, 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 and now we're back. Back around the beginning, so.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Passes five zero, okay. Next up, we have staff nominations, we have.
Remember we meant three D.
Oh, uh, three D, yes. Yep. So uh, before we vote on who's in positions, we should vote on the memorandum, we'll understand if for who's in the positions, thank you.
Maybe just talk about this, so, so um, coming on the stipend committee as we, you know. We, we either consider newer class or we consider um, proposals that we need to consider an adjustment or. Um, sometimes we're just proactively looking through all stipends to consider whether we need to make adjustments, this. Um, adjustment request came from um, the coaching staff. Um, and in reviewing it, we. Researched kind of in the region, what are the coaching configurations in tennis? Um, and it's a, it's a sport that is kind of tricky in a number of ways with um, uh. Varsity and a JV, but only so many spots for making the varsity matches. Since you have a lot of students who are back at school needing, you know, supervised practice or. You know, they need to cancel a lot of practices if you don't have um, another coach. And sometimes when you're going off to matches, you're um, playing in two different locations because of court uh, limitations. Um, and so, this proposal is really, and also there's a new um, state tournament that's been added. So all of those things together, um, in looking at the region, we are um. Recommending a change from having one head coach for varsity and one head coach for JV and one assistant coach. To now instead having a boys' head coach, a girls' head coach, and then a assistant coach. So that it's more of a overall programmatic um. Coaching staff and that's really aligned with how more um. More teams in the region are structured um, for staffing and um, it kind of gives. I think uh, also with our practices, um, we have to really stagger practices to give every. Um, athlete court time, so it gives the coaches kind of a more clear realm of responsibility and commensurate pay with the responsibility that. That it's structured um, in terms of time and responsibility, so. That's the reason for this, sorry, that was a lot of words to explain that.
So basically changing the position list and the stipends attached to them. I would make a motion to, and this is, since the stipends are put in the uh, contract with the teachers. Um, would be a, a formally an amendment to the contract. So I would make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the OEA and RSC twenty-six board of directors. Related to teaching coaching stipends, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Passes five to zero, so we'll move now to co-curricular nominations and I think um. Uh, Meredith, you wanted to introduce that a little bit?
Right, um, what's a little uh, different about tonight's recommendations is on this list, there is the recommendation for um. Our new track um, head coach. And I just wanted to let the board know that um, it, it's been a while since we hired a new varsity head coach that follows the GE policy of being. Of the scale of program and pay that we institute a hiring committee. Um, so for larger varsity sports at the high school, there's a requirement in our policy for a hiring committee. As opposed to um, other physicians that either the principal or the coach interviews on their own and hires for. So this did have a, a hiring committee, much like we do for, say, when we hire a teacher. Um, and Mike led that search team, he's on, on the call and we had um, the representative members that the policy. Um, requires, so I just want to let you know that was a process that happened prior to us bringing this forward tonight.
Great, I would motion to approve the slate of co-curriculars as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Everybody okay with proceeding with the whole slate? It's bigger than usual, um, very quickly, varsity baseball, Don Joseph, JV baseball, all at the high school, JV baseball, Griffin Costello. Assistant baseball, Shane Graham, varsity softball, Chris, Christian Esplin, JV softball, Alyssa Kubash, assistant softball, Todd Hillier. Varsity tennis boys, Zach Arnold, varsity tennis girls, Sierra Tibbetts, tennis assistant, Krista Bell, assistant track and field, Steve Dexter. Assistant track and field, Lynn Weiss, assistant track and field, Brandon Crocker, assistant track and field, Emily Francis, and head track and field, Daniel uh, Julie. Uh, any questions or comments on the slate? All those in favor? Passes five to zero.
And welcome to surely.
Looks like he's on the line, yeah, welcome aboard, Dan. Hope I got your name right, uh. Next up, we have school calendar, we have already had a preview of this, so this is the night we vote on it. So I'm just gonna start off with a motion, then we can have a discussion if we want. I would make a motion to approve the school calendar as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comments?
It is unchanged from the last time you saw it, other than I added the graduation date on here after I counted days and made sure we were. In standing to put it where we typically have us.
There are two shades of blue.
Yes, uh, the lighter blue or the darker blue are holidays and so. I think what we're, we should do is take out the pink and purple, which used to um, signify some different early release days that we took out and we just didn't take the colors out at the top. Maybe we can put blue instead of the pink and purple. With permission, we'll make that, only that change out for you, if you approve it tonight. Yeah, like June nineteenth is, is June team.
So, so the dark blue are. Holiday, there's no school on the holiday or?
That's right.
Okay.
Well, and they're the uh, recognized holidays for, for employees.
Holidays too.
That are paid holidays. So it's more for, there, there's also no school on those days, but for employees, it signifies kind of one of their paid holidays.
But that's the same, okay, so it's closer clothes on dark gray and.
Yes. Maybe we should just take that off, yeah. Yeah, we'll just take it off, that's confusing. Yeah, we'll just make them all gray.
And then like January eighth is a.
Yeah, so, looks, we had talked last time about keeping the early releases to second Wednesday, which. Looks like that's happening. As you all recall, uh, we don't actually have that many degrees of freedom because we have to match the UTC district-wide or region-wide. Ca- uh, calendar from UTC, so in terms of start days and end days and uh, winter break days and things like that. Any other?
Any indices of that, but it does obviously mean the other districts have more degrees of freedom.
There was a period where we ate up four of the five days of allowed deviation for years on a.
Yeah, we, we are eating up for sure one of the five days and given that there are, well, we and, and Hamden. Together are eating up one of the five days with the January seventeenth workshop day, no one else does that, so given that they're.
But some people started after Labor Day, right?
Right.
How can that happen?
Uh, it, it's strange how it, I, it only, I think UTC starts with students that day.
So we could start after Labor Day and not be out of line.
Right.
See now I might have a bigger.
I mean, the rationale for not starting after Labor Day is they use um, ramp-up starts. Uh, work well for kids, especially younger kids, but probably all kids. That's been pretty consistent feedback from teachers, which, you know, I, maybe a case where parents have a different interest, but that's, that's been the rationale behind that. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, it looks like there was, there isn't that week now where there used to be where you had like. No school and then a one day and then a half day, they're like, or I think there is one.
Yeah, it happens at least once and no matter where we put it. We tried to avoid it, but. October, March and um, January get tricky, whether we put it in second or third week, it just. It bumps up and, and uh, November. Bumps up against potentially a different week, so.
Well, I don't, I don't know that I like this calendar, but I, I, I. Everything you put into it, you get work with all the constraints, so I'm gonna sit there.
This is, this is always a sausage making, right? It's, it's the. Um, yeah, it could compromise everybody hates.
Yeah, I mean, the best, the way to resolve, but what I think you're concerned is to not have early releases on consistent week each month. Which, as we've talked about. Was a measured decision that we made based on a lot of parent feedback, you know, I don't know, four or five years ago. That um, it would be helpful if they were more predictable. And I've heard less complaints about early releases since we made that change. But it does bump up against some holiday weeks regardless of where we put it, if we put it somewhere consistently.
I, I was talking to like Amelia and Amber saying years ago, that like, the release tape, there was this more robust town programs. That made these days really exciting.
Like the chair of the town council.
Yeah, is that? The review ordinances on something.
Well, they, you know, they have a, a reg program that they, they brought back, I, I don't remember how it was different if they allowed maybe, let's say, drop-ins. Which they don't allow right now.
Overall more robust, which is saying.
Yeah.
The town, the town used to actually run after-school program in themselves.
They still do.
And they do, well, they run it through the university at this point, right?
Right, but it's a town program.
It's a town program, yeah.
I, I understand just from word of mouth. I understand just from word of mouth that it's less, it's less option, or less something.
And there's a whole lot of things that used to happen.
I know, everything was better back in the day. Your politics now. Yes, I love the politics. Anyway, so.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of the school calendar? Opposed? Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Um, the rest of the board's up here laughing because Mark has made this vote for ten years now.
Once I almost got what I wanted, it was close. Turned over and.
Uh, next up is the Penobscot River Educational Partnership and her local agreement.
Yes, I laid some groundwork with you about a month ago or so about this. It's um, they re. Imagining or re restructuring of our. Educational Service Center, which is currently under spruce. It's in the um electronic folder because it's quite long, so we didn't put it out with a lot of legalese. Um. And this, having an educational service center allows us as a region to realize more state subsidy. For things we're already doing to collaborate, but it really helps us have mechanisms to support more collaboration. And regional efforts, um really for cost-saving measures or efficiencies. So um. It doesn't cau- it's not gonna cause us to do anything different than what we're already doing, but we're just kind of resetting this under the prep umbrella now. Rather than under the spruce umbrella, which it really makes more sense to be under the prep umbrella. Because spruce is more of a special education focused organization and prep is more of a broad-based. Um. Educational partnership organization. So um, that's really all, all this does. And it's a five-year agreement that automatically rolls into another five-year agreement if the um executive. Board of the Service Center, which is the superintendent group. You know, support changing. It's the superintendent group really that's driving this change over to um be under the prep umbrella as the initial. Um, Educational Service Center agreement is sunsetting this year and gives us the opportunity to kind of make this shift. And there just been some changes in structure and leadership that caused this to be the right time to do this. So. There is a motion that they've asked you um to read and vote on to accept this, but.
So, yeah, so I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it. After the attempt to force districts to merge together turned out to be a disaster. The next administration uh tried to have districts cooperate together to save money, right? To um, whole idea was you could get rid of uh central processes and make them bigger and more efficient. And so we, we, and in fact, been the law required to participate, I think, in one of these uh regional cooperation centers and it's been through spruce. But this is effectively letting us do some purchasing and some other things centrally as well as that, that the.
To belong to one, but if you don't, you lose out on some state funding. So it's a little bit compelling. Um, you know, just trying to compel people to be a part of it.
Yeah, right. And but spruce has worked out well for us and sounds like we anticipate some regional purchasing of paper and things is also.
There's a food purchasing cooperative that we participate in. There's um like cooperative uh regional contracts for. Through WB Mason for a lot of our supplies and furnishings that we try to see if that's the most competitive price when we're out shopping for things like that. Um, also professional development offerings are regionalized, so. Just a number of transportation contracts, some, some districts are doing that. We have not. Um, because we've just been on a different cycle and haven't joined in that, so that might be something we look at.
Okay, I. I'd move that the Penobscot River Educational Partnership and her local agreement for Education Service Center. Be approved substantially informed presented for, to this meeting and that RSU twenty six. Enter into said agreement and become an initial member of the Penobscot River Educational Partnership. Established by said agreement, subject to approval of said agreement by the commissioner of the Department of Education. Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion or questions?
No discussions, but I do think you should point out that it's after eight and students are forced to leave or stay at this.
Absolutely. So you are finally on the downhill side of the meeting, but you're so welcome to uh each of personal schedules. Uh, any other questions or discussion?
Well, currently I think there are around fifteen of us. There are a lot. Um, and so. That will be filled in once everyone goes through the process we're going through. Um, it's grown, it keeps growing because. Some other people who aren't and who haven't been in prep in the past. Um, or haven't been in spruce in the past have kind of heard about this and wanted to join in for, to be able to read the benefits and get the state subsidy, so. It's grown over the years. But maybe as many as twenty. More than that, actually. It's over into um Ellsworth now and Bucksport and uh definitely goes up. As far as Catawba region and over to Greenville.
So outside of Penobscot, water shade even?
Yeah, it, well, the Pecos region has, it has long been kind of the prep group, which is Penobscot and Piscataquis, but. We're now in Hancock more. I would say that's where the growth is, more in Hancock.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Passes five to zero. Uh, we dropped the construction, we've already dealt with the stipend, next up is policies. So we have uh two small changes to the GAI, one of them coming from the tech committee and one of them coming from the board last time. Uh, we are adopting this tonight because tomorrow there's an early release day and staff are gonna do GAI um. Training, uh, so the changes, if you look at number seven. Uh. We adopted this uh only, I think, five weeks ago and mostly in that time. This list of uh acceptable uh GAI tools. Have almost all implemented eighteen and over uh requirements, which kind of changes the whole story about using things on a high school. Uh, but the solution is rather than continuing to try and track something that's changing so quickly to just get rid of any kind of list. Who has always intended as kind of an initial recommended list that got updated by the tech. Committee and now we're just kind of like, there's no list, it just. You're gonna pick a technology to use with students, you need to have run it through the tech committee. And the tech committee's gonna address so many concerns, but um. You know, using, not using apply by night, one that's gonna tell you how to build a bomb if you scrape the right query, so um. The other change is the one that came up last time. Uh, scrolling down here to section four, under uh sec- under number eleven. We had built in um, based on Marissa's feedback, we built in a right for students to opt out. And several people, I think Mark and Noah are jumping to memory, uh. Pointed out that for K students, really it should be a parent prerogative also to allow an opt-out. And then for that opt-out to happen, teachers have to actually disclose, you know, sending home before. An advance so the parents know and can choose to opt out, so there's language to address that.
It's on the last page, it's under B four. The font is a little hard to distinguish digits. Yeah, eleven, B four, last page.
Third paragraph from. Yeah, I mean, they added language for K students opting out must be made available to the parent to opt out for their student. Teachers must also uh disclose plans for student use far enough in advance that opting out and forming alternative plans is feasible. So that's the added language there. So I would make a motion to adopt policy, well, it's not a policy, to adopt the guidelines on generative AI. At the revision, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Four in favor, opposed, one against. Passes four to one. Uh, subcommittee reports, policy subcommittee met, this is one of the things we addressed, there's two others that will be coming. Uh, one of them is an update on um serving homeless students. Which is driven by Sam, uh, who's our McKinney Vento coordinator and very much just tracking what we have to do by law. Uh, the other one is a substantial effort to put some guidelines in place around uh. Water-based field trips, swimming field trips, canoeing field trips and so forth. A lot of work, a lot of feedback from Jeff Cohen and Jack Kirkpatrick. It's, even though it's technically just one sub clause of the policy, we'll, we'll treat it as a first read. Uh, so that there's a chance for the community to know this is happening and give us feedback, but the first read will come next week. Uh, UTC.
Just had a meeting last week. Want to acknowledge, I forgot to acknowledge before, that our superintendent is the superintendent liaison. So it's nice seeing Meredith at the UTC meeting also. Um, registration is happening right now. They have a new system, which apparently is. Uh, making it a little easier to track folks who are signing up or who are interested and maybe not finishing uh their application. Um. They're always growing, always doing more things. I always forget to take notes. Anything come to mind, Meredith, that you haven't shared already?
Um, I, I think the registration system just feels like a big step forward for them. I think they're hoping that it will assist with. Um, successful retention of students um. Because they have that more direct communication with the system. Um, and. That's been one of the problems in UTC, they wanna make sure they have the right students in the right, in the seats when the school year starts. Because it's hard to fill seats after the school year starts and students get in the schedule and then don't wanna make a change, so hoping that this will lead to more state enrollment.
Well said. Thanks.
Bruce. Next meeting is March twenty eighth.
All right. Curriculum subcommittees this Thursday at three thirty, I think um. Health curriculum's on there, what else, Susan?
Uh, ELOs, extended learning opportunities and health curriculum.
Thank you. Uh, facilities and building, um, we basically just killed that committee. It hasn't been meeting more or less for a year or so. Uh, wellness committee, any updates?
Yeah, we met, um, I think a little bit of the energy giving out of the wellness group. But uh, yeah, and we talked about the outdoor classroom and sort of how to, I know I actually, Carrie put it up in her newsletter, sort of. How to promote use of it and stuff um within, within the school and community, letting people know about it. Talking a little bit about the, actually, you had sent me the ma- main outdoor school for all um sort of opportunities, but this is potentially this is. Legislation that's passed in Maine that's supposed to fund an outdoors, sort of like the, the Meredith, like a sleepaway kind of outdoor. A opportunity for two nights for all students in Maine, but it hasn't actually been appropriated funds for it yet, so it's like. I talked to someone there that's been pushing for that and the opportunities, but there's a lot of existing places that already offer these and. Can buy into them, but there's not necessarily funding earmarked yet, but they're trying to get some, so just some opportunities. About like having an eighth grade experience or fifth grade experience that everybody does. Going away for a couple nights to some, there's lots of centers and. There's just started talking about that a little bit, um. Uh. Let's see, we talked, we went over the wellness, the triennial policy review a little bit more, and looked at sort of our scorecard on that, um. And you talked about some of the things about, Paul's looked at comparable other districts' policies around like food and nutrition and. You know, healthy snacks in the school, like the, whether it's brought by students or brought by teachers given out as part of the class. Or other things like there's supposed to be policies around like sugary snacks and meeting healthy food standards and whether we wanna strengthen them. Not, we talked about a fair amount, whether we could even do that effectively or there'd be too much pushback, um. Talked about uh. The. Well, like seat time for lunches and whether to have policies mandating that or, you know, we've been pushing for more, but there's still like, you know. ASO and kids still only have like four or five minutes um to sit and eat and. According to some reports, and we don't have great data on that, but it sort of comes from like the problem with scheduling the line and all things by the time certain kids that maybe are.
Others are longstanding.
Yeah, so uh, there are some pol- some districts that actually mandate twenty to twenty-five minutes of seat time and that's sort of recommended, so like, you know. Whether there's any way you could eat that or a certain way we could have language about that, something we talked about, um. It seems important, uh, let's see. I think those are some of the main things. We have a meeting on May sixth. Thirty fifteen is the conference room. Um. Yeah, and, yeah, we're gonna sort of work on drafting potential policy and change. That was taken.
Okay, great. Uh, DI leadership, I think the meeting was since the last board meeting, um. So you know, that's kind of the umbrella committee that sits over five subcommittees, or I guess it's now four subcommittees. Um. I don't know that I have a high-level summary, except there's a great amount of work still happening in each of those four subcommittees. And um. And I, I think one of the things we did is we started, it's been kind of a year and we were kind of reflective. Each of these committees was kind of thinking, what have we, what have we accomplished and what do we need to do differently or what resources or what kinds of changes do we need to do? So I feel like that structure for DI is still working very well and a lot of. Um, a lot, a lot of work is still being driven through that process of the subcommittees and then. Subcommittees kind of have an accountability to the overarching committee and reporting back to the larger group. Anything you would add?
Um, well, something very concrete is we've been talking about this district data analyst um. Idea, because we were wanting to invest in either a, a survey. Platform or company that can help us with surveys or someone that has expertise to help us with survey design and um. Data analysis, so we built money into the budget this year for, uh, to see if we could find someone contracted service, so we've just done interviews today, actually. And hope to um be able to identify, you know, one of the candidates to move forward with in the next, the next few days, so. But it's another kind of step forward and something that's just grown out of that work and a need to. Um, just have more sophisticated expertise that has capacity to do all the things we wanna do, as Brandon. You know, has said, you know, he has done a lot, he and some others who have the expertise have done a lot of the heavy lifting around. Really some advanced data analysis for us and um we hope that this position can help grow our capacity as a district.
And kind of towards that point, just to report one subcommittee, because I happen to be on it, but we've set up the cycle of staff. Uh, student, parent, DEI surveys, and we're about. Next month going to do the first repeat of one of these surveys, so we'll do the staff survey for a second time, so we're. Starting to get longitudinal data, which is kind of, I mean, it was nice to do the surveys once and just see. Uh, where we're at, but now we're actually gonna start to get longitudinal data and now we're things changing over time. So, we're getting more sophisticated in what we know about our district. Uh, strategic plan team, you're all part of that. Um, we basically are in a place of. Reidentified six schools and I think I reported that last time, so I'll repeat them. But it's kind of going to a smaller working group, mostly the admin team and uh. I've been jumping into and trying to ki- kind of work those six schools into something more concrete. And that's gonna come back to the strategic plan committee, which on the April second. Strategic plan meeting, so we're really making this progress. We got our mission, vision, portrait of a learner, um. District values, and now we have six goals and next time we meet, we'll have. Uh, you know, concrete descriptions of what those goals mean and what kind of action steps sit under those goals, so. Uh, it's looking like it might actually finish this year, at this academic year, so that's good. Uh, any other business? Any requests for future agenda items? The floor is open for public comment. Would anybody like to make a public comment? Seeing none. Uh, our next meeting is March twentieth, note Wednesday, not Tuesday, at six PM in the library and on Zoom. Is there any request for information or follow-up? All right, I would motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Harry's five zero.